Meeting of May tenth to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Brennan.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitmore.
Here.
Holland Beck.
Here.
Kumbir.
Here.
Schaefer Weitz. McNally.
Here. All right, we can stand and recite the pugilium of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Lisa, can you give us the status of the posting of the meeting?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Hometown Bank, the Badger Bank, and the Village website.
Okay, all right, looks like we are properly noticed. All right, public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community, stakeholders, to come up and if they are interested in doing so and share with us their thoughts. The board will not be interacting with you, but we do like to hear what residents are saying. Two, two minutes.
Hello, my name is Dean Mon. I do hope the board interacts with me and listens to my comments, but I am here to discuss an item on the agenda tonight. I think it's item nine E regarding our attorney Jane. Just my public opinion, I would like to see the services continue potentially and be a little bit more proactive with some of the items that are coming forward to this community and stuff. So my opinion is I would like to see her on here with everything that's happening, developers' agreements, everything else, just for the interim. My opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? All right, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Let's move on. Approval of the consent agenda, the minutes for April 26th and May 3rd.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda from April 26th and May 3rd.
All right.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the matter to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it carries. On the reports, the president's report, I'll give you more when we meet next because it's kind of an update on the fire and EMS commission. But the main thing is that we did have a meeting last week and the-
It is on the agenda for Old Business Fire Commission update.
Oh, okay.
So if you want to give it at that point, you can.
I didn't see that.
Have to bills.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, I'll hold off then, so let me just do it at that time. Let's move on then, Plan Commission, Eric?
Yeah, we met, we met last night. The only item we had on the agenda was the rezone for, it's actually nine A. We decided to table that because the resident wasn't there and Lisa wasn't available to answer any questions that we had, so we just table it, we're going to reschedule it and make a decision later. So technically nine A, there's really nothing to discuss for that later. That.
Okay. The only thing that I heard out of Plan Commission, and I'm going to have to talk with Todd, I guess, is something about the flagpole.
Oh yeah, it's crooked.
Yeah.
It's-
They were aware of it, it got stuck in the wind last night.
All right. Just make sure it's not going to fall down.
No, they're on top of it.
All right, okay, so it's been taken care of then, so.
Yeah.
Good. All right, Village Office updates, Lisa?
As we talked about at the last meeting, we did send a weekly report last Friday. We'll continue to do that Friday, so the board knows the items we're working on outside of our normal day-to-day activities, so we'll continue to do that. I did want to bring light to two items that we've been hearing about a lot in the Village Office, assuming you guys may be hearing from residents as well. First, there's been questions about water bills out there. And just to clarify, water bills, we do read the meters every month. There's questions, you know, do we actually read the meters? They are read remotely every month. Residents can take their bills and look at their meter inside the house to make sure those numbers match if they don't feel it's correct. There's base rates, fourteen forty-two for water, thirty-one fifty for sewer. So there's base rates of forty-five ninety-two every month, just having the service. We then bill for by thousand gallons used. For water, it's six dollars and eighteen cents per thousand gallons. For sewer, it's fifteen ninety-three per, or, yeah, ninety-three, for a total of twenty-two dollars and eleven cents per thousand gallons used. We only bill when you reach that thousand mark, thousand gallon mark. The way I like to explain it to people, if in an ideal world, say you used fourteen-hundred gallons every month, the first month, fourteen-hundred gallons, you'd be charged for one-thousand gallons. The second month, you use fourteen, that takes your cumulative to twenty-eight-hundred. You've only crossed that thousand threshold once, so you're still only billed for a thousand. There's eight-hundred gallons kind of sitting on the side. The next month, you use fourteen-hundred, you would jump up to forty-two-hundred cumulative. You've crossed the three-thousand and the four-thousand mark. So that month, you're billed for two-thousand gallons. And now there's two-hundred sitting in that reserve waiting to add on. So when, you know, people will call, you know, my bill went up twenty dollars. That's an increase in a thousand gallons, basically. If they watch the next month, that's probably going to drop back down if they're consistently using the same amount. As always, we stress for people to call the office if they have questions. We can look at their histories, let them know, you know, if they have a four-thousand gallon jump, we can give them tips, you know. Is your toilet running? How can you check if it's running? Because that can add up thousands of gallons real quick. As an outside spigot, your, the water softener is often a culprit. So we can give those tips to residents. So we urge them, please call us. Don't be speculating on why, or, you know, are they really reading them? Are they upping their charges and, you know? I've seen comments that we're charging more for water and sewer to pay for the fire station. You know, they're, they're two completely separate funds. The water and sewer, money is used for water and sewer. So please call the village with questions. But that thousand gallons bill is often difficult for residents to understand exactly how that works. So we bill when you cross that thousand threshold. The second one that we're getting a lot of questions on right now is assessments. You probably all received a letter from the assessor. State statutes require that our assessed value be within ten percent of the actual value of properties. And there's language on, you know, a rolling average of four years and so forth. But last year, we were actually, for residential, we were at eighty-one point six-four percent of assessed value. The commercial had been at ninety-four point one-oh. So it was time for us to do a complete village re-evaluation. So what, overall, the village-wide reassessment for residential did go up thirty-four point zero seven percent. Commercial went up twenty-one point zero three percent. A common misperception out there is that because the assessed value goes up, that taxes are going to go up. That's not true, especially in a reval year where all properties are revalued. We are still capped on our levy limits, what we can charge back to taxpayers. So, you know, the levy limit still here, even though the assessed value went up, we can still only levy X amount. So the mill rate is going to come down where people are paying less per thousand gallon, or, thousand gallons, per, per a hundred thousand on their home property. So a higher assessment does not directly correlate to higher taxes. The open book is next Monday from twelve until two here, so residents can come, speak to the assessor, they can view the poll book, or the poll book, I'm still in election too, the roll book, and look at the values. They are also open in the letter, there was contact information, they can contact the assessor, set up an appointment to meet by phone. They can do this right up until the week before the open book. So if people don't get satisfaction, they can file to come before the Board of Review to question their tax, or their assessment. It is their duty to prove that the assessor is wrong. The Board of Review by state statute accepts the assessor's value. The resident has to have proof, be it through an assessment they had of their own, home sales, comparable sales, you know, to be able to come in and prove otherwise. Over the years, I have found our assessors to be very agreeable, working with people. I have never had anyone show up at Board of Review. The assessors have always worked very well with our residents. So if there are questions, again, we urge people to contact the assessor, they're willing to talk with them, explain why their assessment went up, and if they have reasons why they think it's less, they're open to listen and oftentimes will make adjustments. So, again, contact the assessor directly. But those are the two things that we are hearing about in the office the most recently.
I bet you have.
So just, you know, so if you guys are getting questions too, so you know where we're at on those things.
So to go back on the water and the sewer, the water is nine dollars per thousand.
Six.
Six dollars.
Per thousand gallons.
Per thousand. And the sewer is fourteen?
Fifteen ninety-three.
Sixteen. You know, I go out and I talk to people and unless it's on one of their real big issues, they don't usually track that stuff. But boy, they do know about the water and sewer. I, you just, you hear about it, you hear about it, you hear about it. And, you know, it is what it is and we're stuck with it.
Now you can educate.
Sewer is, you know, because we built the new sewer plant, it's paying that off. Water rates, we are controlled by the PSC. If we're raising rates, there's a process to go through and we're not just raising them to raise them. There's processes.
And we haven't raised them?
No, and water, we really should be raising.
It should go up again here.
Period. Well, we will be doing a rate study with the new well.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
And just as a reminder, water and sewer and stormwater, it's self-funding.
Yes.
They have to pay for-
I agree.
-all of that themselves.
Yes.
Our tax dollars can't go towards water and sewer. It has to be paid for out of the water and sewer pay, rate payers.
Yeah.
So that's a distinction that I think people are not-
Yeah.
-fully aware of.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Any questions for Lisa? Okay, move on, bills.
First round of bills, sixty-eight thousand, excuse me, it was sixty-eight thousand five forty-six twenty-two. And second round that was done today was nine hundred sixty-two dollars and twelve cents. For a grand total of sixty-nine thousand five hundred eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and set them out.
One second.
Okay, discussion?
I did have a question. The Cambridge-on-Maine WIDEC grant row expense?
Yep. They had applied for a WIDEC grant and it's actually applied for by the village. We are the go-between, so we did receive those funds from WIDEC and it's passed through to pay them back.
And it just says row expense because the first-
Oh, it shouldn't say row.
Okay.
No, Judy must have, row was the last WIDEC grant.
I knew row had one, a WIDEC grant before, so it's probably just using that same line item.
Same account, yeah.
Same account number, but the, but it's actually for Cambridge and on Main.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
What are these, the court fines and penalties for seven-hundred fifty-three dollars?
So when the court meets, we collect all the money. We then, they break it down for us, what goes to the county, what goes to the state, what goes to the different municipalities. If it's Deerfield fines, they get their portion. So that's just what we collect and then dispersing it-
Okay.
-to the appropriate.
The MSA services, what were those for?
I'd have to look, I'm guessing. That is probably working on the Westgate property.
Oh, got it.
They've been working with on that, so I'd have to look at the bill to make sure, but.
Okay.
And I know it was at the very bottom, it's only twenty-two dollars, but there were three CIB checks, I was just curious about those.
That's background checks for liquor licenses.
For who?
Liquor licenses, operators licenses.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Roll call, please.
Trustee Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmore.
Yes.
Holland Beck.
Yes.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Schaefer Weitz.
Yes.
Brennan.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, thank you. Now we get to move on to unfinished business, the fire commission update. The point that I was, I wanted to bring to your attention. The town of Oakland had their township annual meeting and that it was understood that the fire department wasn't going to, or the fire and EMS was not going to be going ahead with the building, but there was some concern by a number of people that something could happen. It didn't. We had the fire and EMS, and at this time, any expansion, any, anything as an outlay is, it's, it starts, it's on hold, it starts all over. There's nothing that's, that's planned. There isn't any budget, there isn't any dating, there isn't anything. So the commission members, we will have to be looking at exactly what it is that the fire department needs in the EMS and try to come up with something that's going to be financially palatable. So I'll give you more information for the next meeting. I was holding off, I got the minutes, but they weren't approved and I was going to, Lisa and I talked about it, I'm going to give it all to you. It'll be in next, next month's, or, next meeting, in two weeks. But that's the main thing that came out of the meeting here for this week.
Election of officers.
The election of officers, Gene Kapsner did not run for reelection. He had been there for sixteen years. Mark Cook with the town of Christiana is the new president, and I will be serving as the treasurer secretary. So.
Can you handle that?
I, I, it's, I'll, I'll have to get my textbooks.
I'm sure you will.
I'll try to come up with something. And I've, we've been talking already, we've got to do, I think, a little better on the capital budgeting side of things. Be able to predict when some of this stuff is, is coming up and not, not getting some surprises, but we are, we are already at work on that.
Good.
All right. Okay, we'll go into new business. A here, discussion on possible action, rezoning requests from Mike Coughlin. I'm going to say Lisa or Eric. I mean, you guys tabled it.
Yeah, we tabled it, so.
All right, nothing further on that one, Lisa?
No, we, Christie did just speak to them and will send out to Plan Commission maybe next Wednesday evening to possibly have a special- to have a meeting so that we can get it back before the board instead of maybe, you know, he's in construction season to wait another month.
All right, move on. Item B, new business, historical preservation committee. Lisa?
I did do a little more research, or, I put in here a copy of our ordinances. It was the registered architect, we didn't have somebody, but it, the ordinances do say if available in the community, so we wouldn't have to have a licensed architect. So it could be somebody else in the community, so one position is open on that that we can fill.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be an architect.
All right. Okay, thank you. Move on to C, discussion on possible action regarding the Cambridge ordinance twenty-two dash oh-four related to the membership of the Economic Development Committee.
So we did adjust our recommending, adjusting the ordinance per our last discussion, removing the Chamber of Commerce member as there is no Chamber of Commerce anymore. And instead of it being a village resident or somebody who works in the village, we did expand it to somebody who does work for a business within one-half mile of the village limits.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Village of Cambridge ordinance number twenty-two-two-zero-four, an ordinance to amend the section two dot eight zero dot one zero one two of the ordinances of the Village of Cambridge related to the Economic Development Committee composition.
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I do have a question, why half a mile?
That was kind of the discussion that we had at the meeting.
How far does our extraterritorial zone go?
I think this was the policy decision that the, that the village board made to, to just kind of cut, I mean, there, this, this isn't related to any sort of, anything like a, like any kind of zone. It was just kind of making a judgment call on how, how much do we want to be flexible here, especially to get in a particular zone of businesses? So I think that was the, that was the reasoning behind it.
That's where the half mile came in?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
ETJ's a mile and a half, right?
What is?
Extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Is a mile and a half, yeah. I was kind of thinking that it would go that far, but that's good. I mean, if everybody's cool with it. And it, and it meets the, our immediate need for who we wanted to put on? Okay, then great.
That was the question.
Okay, I think we'll have a name submitted for your consideration.
In the next agenda item.
I think so. I got a feeling it's not going to be, going to take a lot of time on that one. Okay. Anyway, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries? Okay. The, the membership, C and D. What's the difference on these two?
C was the ordinance.
C was the ordinance, what we just did.
Appointing a member.
All right, well, discussion on possible action regarding membership of the Economic Development Committee.
Your call to appoint someone as a board, I know there was discussion to-
I'm going to make a motion right now, this young lady here. Can you come up, please, and just introduce yourself and your business and?
Hi, everyone. For those who don't know me, my name is Kayla Sipple. I'm a managing partner at South Central Landscapes. We are a landscape contractor based technically in Christiana, the town of Christiana, but we have strong connections to Cambridge, so we are just over the line between the Village of Cambridge and Christiana.
Okay, and you'd like to serve on this Economic Development?
I would.
Committee?
Yes.
And you think you, you have, you can bring some resources to bear and help us?
That's the thinking. From my observance over the past year, it seems like, I think the committee could use a little bit of new blood and some fresh ideas, which I have, I definitely have ideas. Whether or not the committee wants to consider any of those ideas, I guess, is up to the committee as a whole, but I definitely have some contributions to make, so for what, for what that's worth, you know.
All right, thanks, Kayla. Anybody care to make a motion?
Make a motion before Kayla.
All right.
I'll second.
I met Kayla at, I went to one of the wake, welcome, wake up-
Wednesday Wake Up.
Yes, Wednesday Wake Up, which is at the Cambridge Market, and was quite impressed with all of the things that she had to say and all the ideas just in that short introductory meeting I had with her. So I think she will be a very valuable addition to the committee and as the chair of that committee, I would really welcome having her and getting her ideas and thoughts in, so.
Okay, all right. Any further questions?
No.
Call to vote, all those in favor of the appointment of Kayla Sipple to the Economic Development Committee, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Kayla, congratulations.
Thank you.
Over to great things.
Yay.
All right. All right, now we're going to move on to item E, new business, discussion on possible action regarding village legal services. Trustee Holland Beck, you wanted to put this on the agenda, and so we did.
Yeah, I would like to have a conversation, and I don't know if you want me to just go ahead and make a motion or if you just want me to present. I, while I appreciate everything Jane has done, I am concerned about us, the amount of money we're spending to have an attorney at every single village board meeting. When I was on the village board before, we did not have to have an attorney present. I do understand there are times when there are agenda items that would make it important for the village attorney to be here. But, but on, I don't think that necessarily every single meeting would require the attendance of the, of the, of the village attorney. And so I would like to make sure, I would like to change it so that we don't have Jane at every single meeting, but have her here for specific agenda items as would be appropriate to have legal. For instance, in today's meeting, Jane would not have to have, to come if, if, if we were not going into closed session. But that closed session item that we're going, that's why Jane, so, so Jane knowing that was the last thing on the agenda, instead of getting here at, you know, six fifteen, she could have, she could have maybe come at six forty, six forty-five. And, you know, there are, there are different things that, that she could do, understanding what we need her for on the agenda. And, and that is just, I, that's my, that's just what I was thinking.
Okay.
I have a comment.
All right.
You know, Paula, you've been gone a couple of years, and during that time, we, I saw that if we would have had an attorneys with us more often, we might have been proactive in, in taking care of some of this stuff than reactive. There's been a lot of contracts and stuff that were pushed out, pushed out, and pushed out, and now we're finally getting those taken care of. And I think it's good to have legal counsel sitting here.
I, I think, I think we as village-
Just to try to keep moving along and-
I mean, I get that, Ted, but I think we as village board members should know when we need to have an attorney review a contract, and it shouldn't be pushed off, and pushed off, and pushed off. I think we as village board members should know how to handle the decorum in a meeting where, and how to address public comment sections and how to address people, people who are observing the village board and not need to have legal counsel here to, to play referee for us. I think that is our job as, as trustees to, to understand- here to play referee for us. I think that is our job as, as trustees to, to understand and, and to properly conduct these meetings the way they need to be conducted, and properly refer to legal, the things that we need to refer to legal.
Chuck?
It's just that sometimes it gets dragged out, you know?
I'd say in the last six months, just about every meeting, we've needed Jane, and she's been great. With the negotiations with Dancing Goat, the winery, the grading, billing permits, all these things, we've relied on Jane. But I, I do agree, things are kind of settling down a little bit. So, I, I do agree, we don't need her at every single meeting, but I would like to have her, you know, as needed.
Yes.
So, I'm saying I agree, but, you know, the past six months have been, there's, it's a lot. It's been a lot, so.
Okay.
As, as needed.
All right. Chris's?
I think there should be a motion.
I'll make a motion to, let's see, I can't make a negative motion. I'll make a motion to have legal counsel attend village board meetings only requir, only when required based on an agenda item that needs legal counsel input.
My second.
Okay. Discussion?
Who makes the determination of when legal counsel?
Yeah.
And I do have one question to raise, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, legality. When we went out for an RFP at the board approval, the RFP did have legal counsel attending all village board meetings, and that is the contract that was signed with Stafford Rosebaum. So, the legality of changing it when a contract is signed, I don't know. But that RFP was gone out with board approval stating that we wanted counsel at meetings. Part of that was with discussions with Mary Belling, how municipal government has changed and how we've outgrown a local municipal attorney to beyond what she was comfortable providing us. But, so that is one point to consider, that that is what the contract, what the RFP and the contract were.
I know from where, where I sit, and I've been involved with the board here for five years, and this last, I wanna say, nine months, we have been grappling with some really tough issues. You know, we've got a housing development, and there's a builder over there, and there's a number of people that are upset, and just where should we come in and so forth, and try to help them out with the complications. We've got water issues, and one of our, our major users having concerns. But then that gets us into a host of other things, including a bike trail and development of our industrial park and 134. We've got some stuff that's going on, being proposed with the Melster site. We've got Highway 1218, 134, the Donna Merg property, and what's going on there with the development of that. The solar farm, we kinda, we went a different direction in having legal counsel directly for that, but that's been a complication as well. And that doesn't come along every year, every five years. I mean, that's the first time. And Cambridge is the first community in the state of Wisconsin to be looking at that situation. I wish I had more to report on that. But we've had significant issues that I think we've needed, we found out that we needed to have some guidance because we were weighing through this stuff. And it's not always, you know, we don't know what we don't know. And I don't doubt the, the interest or the sincerity of the various members of this body. But I, I do think that until it, we can settle this down, we should continue on with legal counsel. I don't want us to make a mistake.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying not have legal counsel.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not saying that. I, I just, I'm just, so, let me ask you, Jane, since Lisa brought it up, because there was a contract that you are to attend every meeting. So, is that set in stone and we cannot change that? So, it's a moot point for us to even be discussing this?
We wouldn't enforce that contract. We have plenty of work, you know, we have plenty of work to do, municipal work, lots, lots of clients at our firm. So, I mean, we, we wouldn't hold your feet to the fire on that contract. We did sign an RFP, but we've always thought of our work as being scalable. So, we do thi, I mean, we do, I can't disagree with Mark. A lot of the work that we're doing is cleaning up agreements that could've just been better drafted from the get-go and, you know, so, I, I understand that's not, that's not the question you're raising, but.
That's, that's not, because quite frankly, this board should have drawn those up properly from the beginning, and then we wouldn't have needed village counsel here. So, I mean, that's a whole different question.
Right. And I hope another service that I'm providing the village is issue spotting as things, as things come along. But I, yeah, I, we have, yeah, like I say, we have plenty of work to do, and I am happy to provide whatever level of service. I'm happy to, to be available for, for meetings that you deem to be controversial. We, I do, we will need to make sure that Lisa has the time to brief me on things after the meeting, you know, if I'm not gonna be here. She will need, somebody will need to, to tell me what's going on.
Yep.
So, that's another consideration. But, but our services are scalable, for sure.
I mean, and it's nothing against you personally. I mean, I just-
Oh, no, of course.
It's just, as we're looking at how are we spending our taxpayer dollars, you know, it, it's, there's lots of legal work we need you to do. So, I, you know, you know, part of it is, 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 does it make more sense for us to spend those taxpayer dollars on you actually doing real legal work for us versus having sat for the first half an hour in a meeting that you really didn't need to be here for that half an hour?
I agree. This is an unusual, this is an unusual meeting in that regard, really.
Christie and I did look, they are very good at, when we get the bills, breaking down what the services are for. Roughly one-eighth of the expenses this year to date have been meeting days. The rest have been working on the other issues outside. Part of that, those meeting dates, one day, we did have a meeting with the business before, before the meeting. That was still in that meeting date. One day, she did come in to review files that we had in the office before the meeting. So, you know, like I said, one-eighth of it has been meeting, but it isn't, you know, there were a good four hours of that, at least, that were not meeting times. But majority has been working on the different issues.
And the next, my feeling is the next few months, there's gonna be a lot going on here in the village. And I don't know if we wanna, just, if she, if we want her to be at each of these meetings, let's say the next four months, and then maybe take, take a look at it again. I don't know. But we got 134 coming up by now, and we're gonna start taking a look at, well, number three here is gonna start really taking off your-
The TID hearings are scheduled and the-
The bids and stuff are gonna be, stuff coming in.
So, again, those would be reasons to have the attorney at the meeting. But, but, I mean, can we all agree that except for the closed session today, we wouldn't need to have an attorney at the meeting, at today's meeting?
Yes.
I can't say that because of what comes up in public comment. It's hard to-
But public comment, we can't talk back to them.
I know, we can't. I get it.
So, so we listen-
But it's easier for her to hear what the public comment was and how, but.
And every, and, and all our meetings are recorded.
I get it. It's just hard to gauge, just based on the agenda, 'cause you don't know what comes up.
You, you missed some of the good-
There were some.
Public comments.
But, and, and I get that, but, but if it's public comment, all we do is listen, and we take, we don't take any action on what the public says.
We can make the decision on whether it's gonna be two minutes or three minutes. We can determine that.
So.
As a board.
Yeah, I'm not arguing with that. Just, some of the last meetings have been, so I get, I get your point, that we, we definitely have the discretion to, when to not have a public meeting. That's the whole point. I get it.
Okay. So, what is the motion, Lisa?
To have legal counsel at meetings only when required by an agenda item.
So, who makes that determination? Would that go to you or?
You, Mark? I mean, who would make that determination, that it would be necessary for Jane to be at a meeting, at any given meeting?
Statutorily, probably me. Mark doesn't have statutory duties along those lines, but, yeah.
Okay.
It's.
So, that's something you'd be comfortable with?
Yes and no. Like Jane said, if she's not here and there are things that need to be relayed, it's doubling my time to relay it, or for her to watch the video is the same time minus travel time than if she were here. Six of one, half dozen of the other.
Could she come later? I mean, if there's something that's potentially contentious, kind of having.
Possibly. Eric put the contentious items first. But like we know, we have had contentious crowds, like Eric was saying, that she's needed to step in, even though we say you can't talk. This isn't for back and forth, but.
When did the, when was the contract signed with Jane?
February?
Oh.
March?
Of this year?
Yeah, 'cause they were helping us on some issues before it was early, early this year, February.
That sounds right.
That it was actually signed.
Do you have an estimate on how much we have spent on legal so far this year?
It's been about $38,000 this year. Of that, about $5,000 was meeting days. The rest have been other activities outside the meeting days.
So, it's a small percentage of it, you think about.
You know, I get it, might be a small percentage of it. But when we can't afford flowers downtown Main Street, and, and the last time I was on board, I'm paying for that money out of my own pocket, so that we have flowers downtown, every dollar counts. And I'm just trying to be a good steward of the taxpayer dollars.
Okay. I'll ask you one more time, Lisa. Can you reiterate the motion, and then we'll vote on it?
That legal counsel attends village board meetings only when required by an agenda item.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Whitmer?
Yes.
Hollandbeck?
Yes.
Umbeere?
No.
Schaefer-White?
Yes.
Brianick?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
McNally?
No. But it carries. So, I guess, Lisa, you will have to, you know, have to advise Jane when we think we've got something that is coming up, and her attendance will be necessary.
Walk me through the statutorily, you, only the administrator can come up with an agenda, because I thought the village president had agenda.
The statutory responsibilities for a president are basically setting, helping set agendas.
Right.
Running the meetings, signing contracts, signing bills.
All right.
Otherwise, he is one of seven.
Right.
So, does helping set the agenda determine legal, you know, it's questionable. But those are basically statutorily the jobs of a president, those four things.
So, setting the agenda.
Quite frankly, Lisa, I trust your common sense, good judgment.
I'm just responding to Chris.
Right, on knowing, you know, when we'd need to have Jane here and when we'd, I think you, and you've handled that well in the past. I would like to have that level of confidence back within our staff to understand when, when we might need to have external people come in based on what the agenda item is. So, I'm, I, it's a vote of confidence for you as well, on my behalf.
I was just answering this question.
No, no, I know. So, yep, thank you.
We're gonna see a lot anyway, so.
Well, I, again, we're, it passed. I think you said it was $5,000 for the meetings, and then, what, $34,000 or something for all the background? And we're, the background we'll still need.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, that's not gonna go away. It's just whether or not we have Jane here at this meeting, and we'll have to anticipate, you know, when we have a more heated topic and try to, to be prepared. And that'll affect the $5,000 part of it. So, most of it, it's still business as usual.
Correct. And I wanna say I've reached out to Jane on a few occasions for some contentious issues that have come up in personnel, and she's been incredibly valuable and very, very helpful to have.
Okay. All righty. Let's move on then. Correspondence. I don't see anything. So, upcoming meetings, we've got a library board meeting tomorrow night. Are you gonna be there?
Yep, I will be.
Okay. The water and sewer on the 17th, board review the 24th, and again, on the 24th here adjourned to a later date. Village Board is on the 24th. Board review on June 22nd. Economic Development, Audit and Finance. Didn't you ask for Audit and Finance?
Yeah, I haven't gotten a date yet.
Okay, all right.
Yep, and then we are looking to schedule another Plank Commission, hopefully next week. Also, a cable committee next week, so I'll be reaching out to members on that. And I do have some dates to meet with Oakland on the Blue Jay White, so I'll be sending those dates out as well.
Okay. All right. Questions and referrals to staff, future agenda items. We've got a couple, update from Carol Sapienza, and then a public hearing, ATV, UTV ordinance. Anything else that we want to be talking about here? Okay. Item 13, going into closed session. Anybody care to make a motion?